...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of some minutes. The first is for the regular council meeting, which was held on January 22, 2018.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of January 22, 2018.
Second. Any comments by members of council, changes, alterations, deletions? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Sounds like a seven zero. Next would be the approval of the transcript of the public hearing held on Monday, January 8, concerning the proposed zoning changes in the Village Residential District.
I'll move that we approve the transcript of the public hearing held on Monday, January 8, 2018, relative to the zoning changes proposed in the Village Residential District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, members of council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Seven zero. Next is to approve the transcript of the public hearing held on Monday, January 15, 2018, concerning the master plan for Rolling Hills Park.
I'll make the motion that we approve the transcript of the public hearing held on Monday, January 15, 2018, concerning the master plan for Rolling Hills Park.
Second.
Any comments by members of council?
Just one correction, Mr. Chairman. One of the speakers was misidentified as Charlene Taylor when it was Charlene Salie. She's, she was one of the speakers. It's page 65. I'm sorry, didn't look at the line.
I'll take your word for it. You want to make that change?
I'll make the motion, subject to that notation.
All right. We have that second?
Second.
All right. Any other comments, deletions, additions, changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Sounds like seven zero as well. Next on the agenda, special reports. First up is presentation of newly appointed corporals by Chief Douglas Grimes.
Chief Grimes could not be here tonight, but Captain Belloni and Captain Fordark, and they're going to handle these presentations.
Well, worthwhile substitutes, I would say.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Last year, we started to talk about ways that we could improve the police department. And one of the ideas that was brought up was to have more consistent supervision whenever our sergeants aren't there. So collectively, and collaboratively, I mean, police department, the union, the township, council, everyone, we talked about, about the corporal's position, came up with a selection process. So I just wanted to quickly tell you what the process, process was. We took requests, we asked the officers who would be interested. And then we looked at their years of experience within the department. We asked their supervisors to provide endorsements of their performance. We took into account whether or not they were field trainers, which are officers that volunteered to teach new officers in the department, colleges, teachers, things like that.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Shouldn't have been doing that.
I'm taking a heat for you.
We also took into account if they had been OIC or officer in charge. They were given a practical exercise before, and we also had an oral interview with each of the officers. So after all those steps, the officers were ranked in order of their scores, and we took the top four performers that we would like to interview this time.
Well, before we do that, again, the chief apologized, says he couldn't be here, he had some surgery. He prepared an excerpt from one of his writings he wanted me to read here. Badges are a representation of what once was the coat of arms displayed by the knights. The coat of arms identified the ability from which the knight's authority was derived. To this day, many organizations, badges are referred to as shields. The knight's coat of arms represented the kingdom the knight represented, knight's authority, knight's allegiance to justice, and the knight's chivalry. Much like the knights of those days, police are sworn to protect and serve. Police, like knights, are sworn to protect the weak, defend the defenseless, and to impartially preserve justice for all. As a supervisor, you have taken the next step. You are no longer responsible for only yourselves, rather, you are now responsible for the actions and inactions of personnel under your command. By virtue of your acceptance of this promotion, you have accepted this responsibility. sworn to ensure that personnel under your command perform justly and work diligently to preserve peace and justice for all. Red call, Corporal Bruce.
And maybe before that picture, Captain Ford's going to introduce one of our newest officers. She's going to introduce him.
So I'd like to bring up Officer David Scarcone. He is our newest officer here in Peters Township. He just recently completed field training. Dave comes to us, he was born in McKeesport in 1988. Don't get feel old now. In 2005, he moved from Florida to Peters Township area and went to the high school, graduating in 2006. He spent eight years in the area after that. He then attended Point Park University and obtained a Bachelor of Science degree in national security. He joined the United States Marine Corps Reserves in 2007 and completed eight years in a motor transport unit. In 2013, he joined the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. He was assigned to Zone 2, which is the downtown district area, and most recently worked in Zone 4, which was Oakland, Fargo, and Hazelwood area. He joined us on November 7, 2017. Not before.
Now can we take a picture? Thank you very much. Mr. Lewis, hold on one second. Mr. Lewis would like to miss.
Guys, before you bail out or leave, I reached out to Chief Grimes over the weekend. He would like for the...
What I wanted to speak to was an event that took place in Ohio, a little town, very similar to Peters Township, Westerville, Ohio. Over the weekend, there was a domestic dispute. An individual had his, I believe, seven-year-old daughter in the house. The estranged wife was outside, locked out. And the police responded. Two of Westerville's officers were fails. And it's just unbelievable to me that, you know, these events can happen anywhere. Westerville is a small college town, it's outside of Columbus. My son-in-law is with the Ohio Highway Patrol. But, you know, it's, as we all know, what happened in Cannonsburg, it can happen anywhere. So please be alert, and thank you for your service.
Very much appreciated. Congratulations. This might be a good time to remind everyone to put their cellphones on silent. Next item on the agenda, which I have misplaced.
It is Mark Zemitas.
We got a presentation by Mark Zemitas.
This is in regard to our street resurfacing program.
Okay, that's going to be a tough special report to follow.
Yeah.
In your docket is some paperwork that I typically hand out to council at our road tours in the spring, winter or spring. Just wanted to give council an update on where we stood with pavement management and planning the resurfacing plan for this summer. What I have on the screen now is the next three-year paving program. My assistant, Jason, rode all 112 miles of roads this fall. We surveyed those roads, ranked the roads, put everything into our pavement management software, and came up with our pavement condition index, our PCIs. So as we typically do, we made a three-year plan out of those numbers. And this three-year plan represents about 18 miles worth of roadway. You know, we've typically been paving between five and six miles a year, so to do any more than 18 miles is kind of not realistic. So we try to stick somewhere between 15 and 20 miles when we make one of these three-year plans. So this is the three-year plan. I wanted to make council aware that we have that now for 2018 to 2020. The next slide here, I just want to bring, bring council up to speed on, is this is our typical graph that we hand out of road age. You can see at the bottom, we have categories two to, zero to two, three to five, and so on. And all I wanted to bring to council's attention with this graph is, you know, this is kind of our critical part of the curve here. We have roads over 15 years. Right now, about 21% of our network is over 15 years, and it's kind of the number that we shoot for. We try to get at least 15 years out of a road, but once it's over 15 years, it's probably going to need a resurfacing pretty soon. One thing I do want to point out is that we have a pretty large segment marching towards this 15-year mark right now. So I know we had a little bit of a budget reduction this year, but as I always say, you know, I hate to take the foot off the gas pedal in this regard because I think it catches up with you over time, and I just want council to be aware that we have a pretty big segment of roads reaching that 15-year mark pretty soon. So that, that's that slide. The next slide is the actual road program that we came up with for this summer. It's probably easier to look at this one. So again, we chose the roads based on, you know, the latest three-year plan, the pavement condition index, along with traffic volume, groupings, proximity to each other, to get a better, better bid price, known construction projects. So we, we came up with a base bid and a few alternates that represent about four miles of contractual paving and about a half mile of in-house paving. There's going to be at least one change to this. Mr. Arcuri pointed this out to me at the Traffic Calming Committee meeting the other day, that this segment of Thompsonville we're planning on is right in front of where the Juniper Woods development's going to go in, hopefully this year. So I think we're going to switch that for another segment that Mrs. Merrill pointed out, which is Sugar Camp Road. Where is it on the list? Oh, here it is. We were planning to only go to McIntosh, but it really needs done down to Turkeyfoot, so I think we'll extend this. We'll basically trade a segment of Sugar Camp for this segment of Thompsonville, and it should be about equal. So we're going to look at that and massage that. Again, this is our preliminary list, but what we'd like to do is, in past years, we'd like to bid this out and advertise it in March, and then open bids and award bids at the first meeting in April. So that's just a short synopsis of where we stand with the paving and the pavement management, just wanted to make council aware.
How do you think this is going to come? What is the budget for this year?
The total budget is 1.25 for highway maintenance. Now, out of that 1.25, we still want to do the rejuvenator and the crack seal. I want to make sure that we keep up on that. So the game plan with this list was about $1.1 million of resurfacing.
Does that include the corrugated stuff that we replaced?
No. Well, I mean, that inherently will do some storm sores as part of this, because we never like to pave over top of aging corrugated metal. So if we know we have pipe crossings that are corrugated metal, we'll replace those as part of this contract.
Okay.
But as a general statement, the bigger corrugated metal projects will still come out of our storm sore fund.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
So if we have 115 miles of roads, if we were to go with 15-year expectancy, that's doing about...
It's about seven or eight.
Seven miles a year. And so we're lagging behind that number.
Right. We're behind that number from a pure resurfacing standpoint, but with the rejuvenator, we hit about nine or 10 miles a year with that preservation treatment. And with the crack seal this year, we're expecting to give about three miles of roads crack sealed. So it's not apples to apples, it's not true resurfacing. We're still doing maintenance treatments on another 10 to 15 miles above the, you know, roughly five miles that we typically pave, so.
Just one insight that I would say is, right now, the price of the material is cheaper than it would be the price of oil were to...
Well, I know last year, the prices that we, we got, the bid prices, were extremely low. I don't expect to get those again this year. I mean, I think they'll still be on the historically low side, but last year was kind of an anomaly with how much we were able to get done, so.
Are we doing a road tour this year?
Well, that's what I was going to say. It's, it's our collective opinion that unless council requests a road tour, we don't believe that we have information to share with you that makes that a worthwhile endeavor. But if council would like to go out and see these roads, we can arrange for that as well.
All I can say is, for 20 years, we were told it was mandatory, the prior to the chief.
It would have been mandatory if you were a second-class township, but we are not a second-class township, we're in a humble community.
We went through that last year.
If I could just say, thank you, Mark, for doing this. I think it's very comprehensive, and Jason also. I had sent Mark an email asking about some other sections of road, because going on the road tour, we all drive around, we see things ourselves. So I think the list you put together is comprehensive, including the change that Mr. Curie suggested to take Sugar Camp to Turkeyfoot. But I asked about some other roads that are deteriorating, and whether or not you had a secondary list that you're working with Public Works. For example, the rest of Sugar Camp heading towards the Fromby side has a lot of ruts on either side, as do Bauer Hill Road, which wasn't resurfaced that long ago. I just wondered, are you running a secondary list, or what would be the best way for people to report things like that that aren't going to be on this...
Well, the secondary list is really the three-year plan. I mean, anything that we don't do in year one gets pushed back to year two and three. And that section of Bauer Hill you referred to is on the watch list, it's on the three-year plan. I mean, I think we're going to try to have, you know, if Public Works can go out and do some patching on the section from B Belt to I V, I think is the worst.
Yeah.
The plan would be to try to stretch that out for another couple of years, maybe till year three of this plan, till we can resurface that.
But to answer your question directly, if people have suggestions or concerns, they should never hesitate to give us a call. They should never hesitate to use the phone app.
Perfect. I think it's just that some of them are, I mean, we've had such terrible changes in weather, it's, you know...
Yeah, the roads in general are just bad. I mean, just everywhere.
Mrs. Merrill brought it to our attention a couple meetings ago. The situation on East McMurray Road is getting progressively worse.
That's terrible. People are actually crossing the middle line to try to stay out of the puddles.
And you're allowed to do that if there's a bike, not a puddle.
Hey, Mark, I thought Sugar Camp was a state road. Is that a state road?
It's weird, and part of it is. From Churchill towards Trax Farm to roughly Turkeyfoot, the township line, that's our section, township end. From Churchill to B Belt is state. So the portion, Mrs. Merrill, that you referred to with the ruts and pen dots, well aware of those ruts, that's state.
Well, and that creates problems for school all the time, that's where the flooding's happening.
Right.
That's probably why the roads deteriorate.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Next on the agenda is a presentation of Parks and Rec by Mr. Crummy.
I feel a little nervous since my security guard...
Yeah, tell your detail.
My detail.
Might have been a good day to rob a bank at Peters Township.
He said that, not me. My name's Jeff Crummy. I am the vice chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board. I am here to give the fourth quarter review for 2017. First on my list is the Columbia Gas Replacement Project. Those gas lines were replaced in the park along where we hold the haunted trail. It was completed a few days before the haunted trail project, and thanks to our park maintenance staff, we were able to get that section of the trail ready to go for the haunted trail. And we were able to put over 2,100 people through the haunted trail this year. That's a record, a new record.
It was a good night, though, too, weather-wise?
Beautiful weather, yeah, it was beautiful weather. We actually had to turn people away. We got to put more people through it, so. We recommended three names to council for naming the new park in the former Rolling Hills Country Club site. The three names were Rolling Hills Park, McMurray Hills Park, and Spring Hills Park. And as we know, Rolling Hills Park was selected as the winner. We have been receiving more requests for renting areas down at Peters Lake Park. And we realized that we did not have that on our forms for a place to rent, and we didn't have a price associated with it or a fee or anything like that. So we've incorporated that into our rental fee structure so that people will now be able to request renting space down at the Peters Lake. The Rolling Hills Park Master Plan, there were several committee meetings held. Several members of the Parks and Recreation Board were on that committee, as well as some council members. There was open houses, public hearings, and the master plan has been submitted to council for approval. We have been talking about several of the sports associations and them being delinquent in supplying the required information to the Parks and Recreation Director. We've had several discussions. We actually had to issue one of the associations a letter stating that, that they did not have their required documentation to us by our next meeting, that we were going to have to issue a fine. That particular information was specifically coaches' clearances. That's one thing that we do not want to be delinquent in, is coaches' clearances. We did subsequently get all that information. What we think happens is, we go through these cycles where board members change, presidents change, and these processes that are in place, the handoff's not real clean, and, you know, new presidents come on place, and documentation coordinators take, and they don't know what to get us and when to get us that. So it usually takes us a little encouragement for them to get us their required information. The Girls' Softball Association approached the Parks and Recreation Board with a proposal to put up lighting in the two fields, 8 and 10, down in the softball complex in the park expansion. We discussed their proposal with us. We made several recommendations on how they need to modify their proposal as far as the amount of participation the Girls' Softball Association would have to make financially, what the township might be willing to do. And they're in the process of revising their proposal and bringing that back to us, and subsequently would come to council. Those are the highlights.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions by members of council for Mr. Crummy?
Nope. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is audience comments. This is a part of the meeting in which people can come up and talk about an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone tonight? Seeing that there are none, we can move to unfinished business, which is award of a bid for the purchase of a dump truck, and we have Mr. Hurson happily here to provide us the details.
So after the last meeting, council asked that we provide additional information, and what I heard was that you required additional information as to the need to replace this vehicle, and also why it is the recommendation of the Public Works Department that we acquire a Dodge truck instead of a Ford truck. Within the docket is the memorandum from Mr. Hurson, and Mr. Hurson's here to answer any questions you might have.
I think the explanation was very well presented, so I don't have anything. Does anyone else, any Ford truck lovers that want to speak?
Another thing I'd like to ask council to consider is the truck colors.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, they look like pen dot.
They look like big cats.
Peters Township logos, red and white. I'm just asking council to consider maybe red.
Do they have red trucks?
Yes. The yellow costs more, the yellow...
Red would certainly be more appropriate. I always wondered why our trucks were yellow. Was it...
We're some shade of red, maybe not fire engine.
There's a lot of different shades, but...
No, we'll have a white, we have a red crew cab now.
Mudd's going to show up.
Can I suggest this? If council's willing to entertain changing the color, then allow us to come back with a specific proposal for you to look at, so that we understand, like, how you lose, you know? If you make that a red truck, you may well not be able to see. The thing that you got to keep in mind, though, is, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't transition to a different color, if we do transition to a different color, it'll be many years before the fleet is all one color, because it'll take a while to do that.
Sure.
Is there a reason, though, that we always had yellow, or is that just...
It's been yellow since I've been here. I think it was yellow when Michael was here in '76, so it's always been that color, so.
I don't think that's correct. I think we changed from red to yellow because of considering the vehicles more visible.
But I'll tell you what, I don't think that occurred while I've been here. But anyhow, if you're willing to entertain that, we'll come back.
I'm willing to entertain a change in color.
Just a comment, the school district has some vehicles that are red, trucks that are red, and the fire department there. Are you concerned at all about that, or any conflict? Would you put the logo in a different place?
No, same, same spot, front door. It would have a white or yellow border around it, so it stands out.
All right.
With the LED strobe, with the strobe lights, the way they are, they're so bright, so...
So do we have to make this motion to award the bid?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we award the bid, subject to, you know, the color changes.
What?
Well, I was going to say, we have two. It is all, it's the cabin chassis, then it'll be the body.
Well, to me, that's the...
Yep.
All encompassing.
That's the whole thing, yeah, it's all encompassing.
Anybody have any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? It sounds like seven zero. All right, next on the agenda is new business, and the first item is the resolution amending the Peters Township Police Policy Manual, so as to adopt a policy and procedures relating to the use of body-worn cameras.
So in the docket is contained a... So in the docket, it's contained a resolution adopting a change to the, to the police manual as it relates to body worn cameras. As you will recall, Chief Grimes had approached council about the ability to do a one-year trial at no cost. And what council's direction was that prior to those cameras being put into use, that there actually be developed a policy. The policy that you have in front of you is based upon national and state standards. It was drafted in the police department. It has been reviewed by the solicitor. And Chief, I'm Captain Ford and Captain Millenium prepared to answer any questions, may I have one?
All right. Does anyone in council have any questions for the office?
Nope.
I have a question. I'm trying to find it, but I was under, I thought I saw there was a section in here where it led me to believe that these body cameras will not be continuously in use.
That's true. That's correct.
And the question is, doesn't that defeat the whole purpose of it? Because, you know, it, part of this is to protect yourself from unwanted claims. And, you know, they're going to say, well, you know, you didn't see what happened before he shot me because the camera wasn't on. And I want to know why we're doing that, under what circumstances we would shut that off.
Well, the cameras will be, the device will be on.
Okay.
And the officer needs to push the button. We brought one just for you to look at it, but it's not activated or anything yet. But they will push a button to record. So, you know, this is going to be something new. So there may be times when they forget to push the button. They may be involved in some kind of an incident where they can't push the button, or it's not smart to worry about that button. You know, like eventually...
So it's not on constantly. You have to use a button.
The camera is on, but to record, you have to push the button. But it will go back, what is it, 30 seconds, I think, from when you push the button for that event. So, but, you know, there's...
Sounds like a DVR.
Sort of. There's a lot of, a lot of situations where they're going to be required to record, a lot of interactions. But we did have to put in some exceptions as well where we don't want them to record.
Don't you have an issue, too, with, like, emergency rooms?
Correct. And that's one of our exceptions, yes.
Apple log.
Schools.
What's in here? I see those exceptions. I was okay with that. I just thought, like, it was up when they were on the field. But that makes sense to me.
It's ready to go. They just have them.
Situation where you might not have the ability.
But trusting the button starts the recording, or you say the camera's always on?
The cameras are on continuously, like powered on, not recording, yes.
Do you have to push it off to, or does it have an automatic timeout?
We haven't had training yet, but I think you push it off to stop recording.
We have the proper training on the 11th.
Yes.
I mean, I brought this, if you, you know, I don't know if you want to actually take a look at it, but the exceptions, the exceptions to the schools and the hospitals.
Well, I can understand.
Yeah, but if we're responding to an active shooter...
That's on.
That, yeah, you will turn it on. But if you're going out there for, you know, minor disturbance, you won't turn it off.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Hey, thank you very much for taking this time.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll move that we approve Resolution 020118, amending the Peters Township Police Manual to adopt a policy and procedure related to wearing of body worn cameras.
Second.
All right. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seven zero. Next item on the agenda is the decision regarding a conditional use requirement for possible traffic improvements related to the proposed Waters Senior Living Development.
And obviously, Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself from this, as I see my colleague, Mr. Quinn, in the audience.
I had a discussion last week with Mr. Smith regarding this issue. It's his belief that, given that there is pending litigation here, that it would be appropriate, prior to consideration of this matter by council, that we have a brief executive session.
All right. We will right now go into a brief executive session. And again, is a decision regarding a conditional use requirement for possible traffic improvements related to the proposed Waters Senior Living Development. Mr. Lauer?
On December 20th, the township issued a conditional use decision in response to an application by the Waters Senior Living Group for a proposed four-story group living facility to be located at the intersection of Valleybrook Road and Friar Lane. Condition four is on the screen, and in essence, what it says is that the applicant was to go out and do a traffic study for the purpose of determining whether turning lanes are currently warranted, as well as to determine whether or not, once the proposed development was complete, whether turning lanes would be necessary. And then based upon that finding of that traffic study, it would be Peters Township's council's decision to require or not require the turning lanes be constructed. That traffic study has been completed, and what it, what it has determined is that when traveling on Valleybrook Road towards the intersection with East McMurray Road in that direction, a left-hand turning lane is currently warranted. It also determined that once this project would be complete, that slightly over 23% of the left-hand turns would actually be generated by this development. So since that traffic study has been issued, we've had a chance to sit down with, with the developer and discuss those findings. The Waters Group has proposed an alternative to the construction of the turning lanes. And what, what that, the framework around which that proposal is centered is a, the idea of an enhanced traffic improvement fee. The cost of constructing this turning lane, as you see here, they have estimated at $422,000. That does not include the cost of the right-of-way on the one, on the one leg, nor, nor does it include the engineering fees. But the construction estimate, we believe, outside of that, to be fairly accurate. So what they're proposing is that they contribute a fee that would be the equivalent of 23.68% of the total cost. In addition to that, they would waive any right to appeal that fee, as you, we have seen in the past where developers come in a year later and appeal the fee based upon traffic counts. They would withdraw the appeal that they've made to the Washington County Court of Common Pleas of council's decision. And then the township would incorporate this project into its traffic improvement programs, capital improvement plan. So personally, I think this is a good compromise. I think if, in fact, at some point in time, we wish to proceed with this, and it was included in our, our capital improvement program, it would be a pen dot project. The amount of money that they're intending on putting up would be sufficient to cover the match we would have with, with Pen Dot to undertake this project, and, you know, and therefore this project would be done at, at no cost to the, to the municipality. The thing about that is that you should be aware that, that, you know, we can't give you a timeframe when this project would be done, or when Pen Dot would have a project on, on Valleybrook Road. But with that in mind, it's, it's our recommendation that, that the township manager and the solicitor be given the authority to, to a negotiated agreement with the Waters Group for the, for the purposes of settling the suit and, and providing for an enhanced traffic impact fee.
Well, at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we table the decision regarding a conditional use requirement for the possible traffic improvements related to the proposed Waters Senior Living Development.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Abstain.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the...
Was the vote?
Six zero.
Six zero.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the township manager and solicitor to negotiate with the Waters Group a settlement of the litigation within the framework described by Mr. Lauer and the Waters Group proposal to settle the litigation.
I'll second.
Is that settlement subject to council approval?
Yes.
Yes, subject to council approval. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Abstain.
Six zero.
Well, it makes no sense for me to say no. I'll just say no when we vote.
All right.
On the settlement.
Okay. So that, next to, on new business is the resolution establishing a policy regarding the acceptable use by employees of the township's computer, network, internet, and electronic mail.
As you can see in the manager's report, it's been a number of years since we have updated this, this policy. The reality is, it changes little in terms of what is acceptable. It does update the terminology contained within the, within the policy. It has been reviewed by our labor attorney. Our intention would be that once it is adopted by council, that we would distribute it to all township employees, and that they would be required to acknowledge receipt of it.
Okay.
I move that we approve the resolution, but I don't have the number. It's not written anywhere.
020218.
020218.
Second.
0218.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further comments?
One clarifying question, Mr. Lauer. First paragraph, sentence four. Additionally, certain users may also be provided with access to the internet. Do you want to, I think perhaps you want to qualify how that happens? Would it be at the discretion of the manager, at the discretion of, I think you only need a phrase perhaps for something like that.
Okay. That sounds reasonable.
All right. Any further conversation? Comments? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That's seven zero. Next item on the agenda is Resolution authorizing the appropriate township official to submit an application for traffic signal approval for, to the Pen Dot for signals located on East McMurray Road at the intersection of Center Church, Valleybrook, and Bee Belt Road.
As we had informed council previously, Pen Dot has a project for repaving East McMurray Road from the crossroads to the county line. Their individual who's in charge of traffic signals came out and surveyed our existing signals. They are prepared to do some improvements on those signals, including the installation of an uninterruptible power supply at the Center Church Road, Valleybrook Road, and Bee Belt Road. The installation of radar detection at East McMurray at Bee Belt Road, and the replacement of some of the signal heads here at this intersection down below. And also, the installation of an overhead private drive sign. So this is one more attempt to address that confusion we have.
Well, it's nice they're making the attempt.
Yeah.
Does that, does that red light ever turn?
Well, absolutely.
To make a left? I mean, does it just stay red?
No, it turns on.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know.
If you ever go visit that guy, he'll hit that light. It'll turn when you get to there.
I'm going to visit and see.
I move we approve Resolution 020318.
Second.
All right. Any further, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Again, seven zero. Next item on the agenda is the request from the Peters Township Baseball Association to install a synthetic turf infield on field number two at Peterswood Park.
So on this field, the baseball association would like to install a synthetic turf infield. One of the problems they're running into, springtime, they have a heck of a time getting their, their baseball schedule in because of the wet conditions. Their intention is to actually, to play synthetic infields on all of the fields that they play on. The thing, and this has gone through the Park and Rec Board, and they've recommended approval. The only thing that I, I would point out is that we need to enter into agreement with them to do this. And in this particular case, and I think they're in a position on this field to accomplish it, I don't think we're in the position to be able to lend money to do this. That, the money has to be available and upfront. The other thing about it is, they had, they wanted to do this for a spring play. That's going to be an impossibility. This project, even though they're providing the funding for it, it has to be bid as a township project, and it has to have prevailing wages. And so it's going to take us some time to, for Mark to develop bid specifications for this project, and then take it out the bid. So my guess is that the earliest this could be completed is in the fall.
So, Mr. Lauer, the other aspect is the ongoing maintenance or future replacements. So what kind of agreement would we be looking for from them for that?
Well, that's really a question for council to answer, because it's, you know, it's sort of like the turf field up above, and, and once it's in, we own it. And I would assume we would be, we would be assuming the responsibility for maintaining it, including replacement, unless we call that out now. The problem you're going to run into is, you know, this, you will be, if, if we indicate the baseball association is going to do this, you're committing some group of people 10 years from now to replace that infield who have no idea of how this ever got there. I mean, we certainly can remind them, but it doesn't mean they necessarily have the resources.
That should be a requirement within this deal, though. We could make, and, and as far as maintenance goes, the, the baseball association does a fabulous job of maintaining our fields.
I'm not disagreeing about that. I'm talking about the new.
I'm not, I'm not worried about maintenance of the synthetic turf. But my, my only concern is, while I can understand why they want to do it, from a safety standpoint, I mean, the ball travels a little faster on synthetic turf than it does, no?
Hundred percent not, not.
Hundred percent the other way.
Really?
Yeah.
Not, not when there was the Three Rivers Stadium.
I think it won't travel, I would, I would think, when this, particularly on a dry summer day, I would think that it would travel a lot faster on that.
It's a parking lot. It's a, there's bigger safety concerns on this dirt.
Well, you can come up to make the comment, please.
Sorry.
Just state your name and address.
Sure. I'm Mark Williams. I'm the secretary of Peters Township Baseball Association. My comment was that when it's hard in the middle of summer in July, when our tournaments are played, that, that field's a parking lot. All of our fields are.
I'll grant you that.
Yeah. The conditioning that we put into them, aerating them, and all the work that we do to, to make them playable, it's still, when it gets hard, it, the turf is a much truer surface. There's no bad hops, balls jumping up and hitting kids in the face.
Okay.
What do you do for the baseball? Is that our special dirt?
No, this would be all turf. We would go turf from essentially fence to fence all the way around the, the radius of the, of the infield.
Okay. Do you have an issue with the, with the timing as we're...
No, we don't have an issue with the timing, but our issue is going to, I mean, I don't know, I don't know the procedure here, guys. Prevailing rate, prevailing wage is going to kill us. It's going to, it's going to jack our cost up 25%. We're paying for it ourselves. I don't know why, why we would need to go that route.
Because the state of Pennsylvania just told us that. We've gone around on this before. A lot, a lot of the athletic associations have contributed to the improvements in the park. And we have tried different ways to escape having to pay prevailing wage. But the department, the labor and industry is very clear that in this kind of project, prevailing wage is required.
It's why a bathroom in a park costs.
Two hundred and fifty pounds a dog.
Dave?
It doesn't, it won't jack the total cost of that much, just the labor component.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but no, we're not, we're okay with the time.
All right. Thank you.
So if council wants to go ahead with this, you know, it's my recommendation that, that the township manager be authorized a negotiated agreement for the installation of the synthetic turf field.
Listen, listen. I mean, I've been down there. My, my kid played baseball, and that, that infield's horrible when it rains. When you keep playing on it, oh, you lose a lot of time down in the spring. You know, I'm not a big fan of having to be, to maintain that in the future. I don't think there's any way around that, though. I mean, I don't think, I think you're right, Paul. I don't see how you can condition that on the association in the future.
Right.
Replacing it, because A, there may not be an association in the future, and so on and so forth. So, I mean, I'm willing to do this, but I, I am not going to do every inf... So, I mean, I'm willing to do this, but I am not going to do every infield and every baseball field. I'm just not going to spend that kind of money if we're going to ultimately be the ones eating it to replace it. I mean, if you want one, that's great, and this is probably a good one to do because the older guys, they don't, if there's a rain out, there's a rain out. The other guys, they don't own a gun.
Can I go?
Sure, please.
Josh Eckenroth, Peters Township Baseball Association Board.
State your name and address.
Josh Eckenroth, I'm Peters Township Baseball Associate and Board.
Your address.
101 Valley View Drive, Venetia, Pennsylvania. So the three fields that we're talking about, Peterswood Park Two is one of them, where a majority of the games are played, but also, we're looking at Venetia Field, which is...
You can try. I'm just telling you that if it comes up while I'm still sitting here, I'm not going to vote for this again.
Okay.
Because I'm not taking over, and I'm not taking, be responsible for those costs. It's just, I can't justify that. I can justify one field I own, problem.
Okay.
But that's just my field, and there's six other individuals here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We authorize the township manager to negotiate an agreement for the installation of synthetic turf on field two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Seven zero. All right, next item on the agenda is accept the resignation of John Yawka as member of the Peters Township Market Recreation Board.
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Yawka's resignation and thank him for his service.
Second.
I'd like to say resignation with regret. But any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Seven zero. Mr. Lauer, accept the resignation of Stacy Noble as an alternate member of the Peters Township Zoning Hearing Board.
I'll make a motion that we accept with regrets the resignation of Stacy Noble as an alternate.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Abstain.
Abstention.
She's my cousin-in-law. I'm not touching it. You know, cousin-in-law.
Well, then vote no, so she has to stay on.
You know, it's the tie that binds, you know what I mean?
Next item on the agenda is payroll and bills.
Jim, before you go on, one of the things that we would like to do, we have alternate positions on the zoning hearing board and on the planning commission, and if we can, we'd like to schedule next Monday for interviews for those...
You're killing us with these meetings and meetings. It's like every week.
Next Monday coming up.
Yep, might be.
That's President's Day. That's a holiday for some people.
Then we will, we can, probably will be...
And I'm not going to be here, so...
But what we will do then is we will schedule a few in front of the next regular council meeting.
But I'm going to, we have to film?
You have an alternate on the zoning hearing board and an alternate on the planning commission.
And we haven't interviewed anybody for those positions.
We have not interviewed anybody for those positions.
Well, quite honestly, I was impressed with Mr. Verlato this evening. I would make a motion at this point to appoint Mr. Verlato as the alternate to the planning commission.
I would second that.
I have no problem with that, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Looks like we have a new member of the planning commission.
There we go, Paul. We took care of one of them for you.
Took care of one of them. I'll get you someone to interview for that.
Nice job, Mr. Cozer.
Thank you.
I was in agreement with that, so we're all good.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find it to be in order. I make a motion that we approve the payroll and bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I had a question. Is the Biony payment the last of the Valley Brook construction rehab, not Valley, yeah, not Valley Brook, the Hidden Valley, excuse me. Hidden Valley.
I can confirm that, yes.
Is that the end of it?
The rest of the country.
Yeah, I don't think they're willing to pay, but they're...
We're much appreciative of the...
You should be.
Next is correspondence. We want to talk about Eddie.
We need you to vote on the payroll and bills.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thought we did.
No, I interrupted.
We have a motion and a second. That's why I could interrupt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Seven zero. It's official now. Book it. Dino?
Wanted to make sure everyone knew what we did for Valley Brook Country.
Didn't do it for Valley Brook Country Club, but correspondence.
You have correspondence from Rich Kovach, from the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. We'd like to talk about that in executive session.
I don't want to talk about it in executive session. Let's do it at the end.
Well, let's talk about it now, then. What?
Well, wait, you want to do it in executive session after the meeting, or do you want to take a break?
No, I was going to say...
I don't care. If we're going to go in executive session, go ahead.
We have an executive session regarding this.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, save it for then.
We're going to save it for the end.
Let's move through some of this stuff.
All right, and what about the, oh, we have an issue from Dan.
He would like to meet with the personnel committee.
Whoa. Could be our first meeting in a long while.
Yes. So if you could get me a time when that would make sense to do, we can...
Am I on that committee?
Yes.
I think I am.
Yes.
Yes and a no.
This is where you, this is the one time it pays to be the Shay Cog ramp, you know? You, Mr. Arkury joined...
I think I gave it up. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Arkury joined the committee at the reorg meeting when you became chairman of council.
You can have it back if you want.
I think we had one meeting all the time I was on.
It's all gonna be nice, you know?
It's all right. Monica, is it you, me, and Frank?
So you took Shay.
Don't remind me.
So it's me, it's Frank, me, and Monica?
Were you three together and trying to figure out a perp?
Absolutely. Okay.
You see, Jim being the alternate on Shay Cog is already paying dividends.
Yeah, I see that. All right, and we have the minutes of the various boards. Any comments on any of that? All right, we have a miscellaneous item regarding the Green Light Go Project.
Yeah, and we just wanted to put this on there so that council's aware that the process used by Pendott to select consultants is different than that that is used by the township. Under the Pendott process, you cannot ask for cost proposals. You ask for proposals that demonstrates people's credentials, and you choose the design professional best qualified to do the job, and then you negotiate a price with that individual. So my only reason that Mark and I wanted to point this out to you is that, when this comes back to council for action, you will not have multiple proposals, including costs, and, but this...
So you can't reach an agreement with the person you select?
I guess we move on to the second one. It's not like they could say, well, this is my price.
So there's an opt-out.
Yes, but what I can't, what most likely will not see are, we have to go and get three proposals, you're not going to see three estimates. You're going to see one.
And what's this for?
This is the project down here for the traffic signal improvements.
I'll vote no on that, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Doesn't matter what you bring back. No, because I didn't vote favor of the light.
All right, there we have it.
The other thing that we wanted to point out to you, this just came in, we have a, a application for a off-premise, well, I guess it isn't an off-premise, but it's a billboard, and we haven't had one of these, and it seems...
Is this this Giant Eagle, is it? Because somebody grabbed me in a restaurant over a weekend.
It's on the western side of Route 19, just north of Old Oak Road. There's two small properties there, just south of Volkswagen.
Where there were... That Little Lviski Lot?
Just north of the...
I thought we were tapped out on...
There is a limited area where they can be placed. There are set of criterias. We haven't had a chance to review this application to make sure that it meets all those criteria, but there is a possibility for additional signs.
But there were billboards there. Weren't there like in the 80s? I think there were billboards there one time when I was a kid.
Could be electronic.
Well, one face, I think the north-facing part of the billboard will be LED, changeable. The southern face will be static, according to their...
Have they taxed that?
Yes, yes. And that doesn't come to council for a...
All right.
Well, as long as they tax it, I'm okay on that one.
Miscellaneous item from me, Mr. Courtney in St. Petersburg.
We probably, do you think we should talk about that here, or is we talking about the executive session?
We just throw it on the executive session. We're going there anyway.
I have a question for Ed. What's this Giant Eagle thing? Because somebody grabbed me in the restaurant over the weekend, and they said that they're going to notice that Giant Eagle wants to erect some sort of signs?
They have a request in for variances for both the market district and the Giant Eagle Cross.
Well, this is the one up at the crosses.
They're for both. Just, they want to put additional signage on the face of the building which says beer and wine, and we don't think...
Well, they live up above, and I'm thinking, well, it's not like it's going to be spotless.
It's a beer and wine. They want to add beer and wine to their building.
But I thought we had already, if I recall, when we did the market district, they came, they wanted, they wanted signings like every other.
We granted variances to them.
They wanted to look like a NASCAR driver.
I would tell you, our staff recommendation is for the zoning hearing board to approve these requests.
Well, then we have nothing to worry about.
And Frank will vote no.
And I'll vote no.
Frank will vote no, so we've got to get that all covered.
Hey, I just like the inconsistency.
Yeah, you're consistently inconsistent. All right, all right. Anything else? Anybody want anything for next meeting's agenda?
I had a question with the school and the pool, and what we broke off of that discussion with the...
We've had discussions with the YMCA. They are meeting with the people who are doing their market study this week. They intend to have that done within the next three to four weeks, and then, at that point, they'll be prepared to sit down and talk with us.
Is that the fastest? I thought we were going to try to ask them to come back with something quicker.
Well, in my discussions with them, they can't move forward until they know themselves what the market study tells them, so that's as quick as they can move, so.
I know it's an item we've talked about before many times, is the trees on the lines on Valley Brook Road past... Yeah, and I got a lot of comments on them. I think those properties...
Absolutely.
And I know they keep coming back saying it's no big deal.
Atkinson was...
It certainly seems like a big deal.
We have this...
And we have no recourse to force them to fix this? Well, we got to wait till one of the trees and the power lines fall down and hurt somebody?
Today, Mr. Herschel went down and got the poll numbers, and I will once again contact them. We have the same situation out on Turkeyfoot Road.
Do you call them or do you put that in writing to them?
Well, I think if we don't get a response this time, we ought to file a complaint with the PUC, and I think that will get them.
I think if they're unnoticed and they have an issue, they'd be more avid. It's just like when the state told us they wouldn't, they weren't going to pave sugar camp till the following year, and we sent a letter saying, hey, there's like dangerous ruts there, and they were out the next, like, three days later, filling them in. So, you know, I mean, sometimes, you know, put it in writing or do something.